It's time for our regular scheduled board meeting. Tonight, we have a former commissioner from Dixie County, Jason Holyfield, and I've asked him to be mind openers with the indication and pledge. Y'all stand.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we come to you humbly this evening, Lord, and ask for your wisdom and your guidance in everything we do as it's your blessed Swanee County and give these men wisdom to run our county the way you'd have it run, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. All right, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from July 2, 2019, regular scheduled board meeting. Do I have any changes, corrections, or anything that wishes to be added? Hear none, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, we have 2 through 10. We're gonna pull item number five for discussion and item 10 for discussion. Any other items wishing to be pulled this time? Hear none, need a motion to approve 2 through 4 and 6 through 9.
Make a motion.
Been a motion by Commissioner Hale, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 5, approval of recommendation regarding ADA compliance. Mr. Hancock had a question, if you would, Mr. Hancock, making way to the podium.
Beau Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road, just got two questions. In here, they're talking about upgrades to the website. What are those, what do we have to do to upgrade the website, make it compliant with ADA?
Paul, to answer the question, there is no standard to upgrade it to reach any type of federal standard that they have, but what we've, we are in the process of doing is continuing with our upgrades that we've already started. So, they've seen that and we're moving forward.
Why is this, why was the county sued to start with? I mean, if we weren't complying with something?
It's not Swanee County, it's multiple counties across the state and the nation that are being sued by various attorneys and so-called victims, but it's, but it's, there's no standard, there was no guidelines laid out within the federal law that set a standard of where you needed to be, and so there's, there's no case law on it, there's nothing, so right now it's wide open for them. But, I know that probably wasn't as poetic as you would've put it.
Let me, let me take a shot at it. Law was passed years ago that requires something of local governments that cannot be accomplished.
Yeah.
That's why we were sued. So, we are working at improving the information that we make available, but we can't make it perfect because there isn't a standard, no standard has been established so that you know when you've arrived.
Yeah.
And, the way I understand it, and Mr. Pravat can correct me if I get out of line, state law requires that we put everything on our website, and federal law says you make it where a visual scanner can make it available for the seeing impaired, and some of the documents that we have to make available to accomplish state law is not, will not work in the, in the viewfinder. Is that pretty accurate?
Among other things.
Okay.
Right, but whomever sued, firm, or whatever, the attorneys are happy with the 21,000?
Actually, I got, when I prepared this memo, it was 21,000, they are now extremely happy at 15, because we're gonna settle it at 15.
Okay. I'm glad I came up here, we wouldn't have known that, would we? Would we? If I hadn't asked this question, y'all, would we know that it wasn't 21,000 and it's just 15,000?
Well, it would've been 15, it wouldn't have been 21, whether you knew it or not. I don't mean to be rude about it, but I mean, that's...
It's my money.
And it would've been 15, 6,000 less than what...
That's fine with me, but I would like to know that it's not 21 and it's the 15.
All right, well...
Well, anyway, how much is the insurance gonna pay of that 15?
10.
They're gonna pay 10?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is, does this settlement keep us from being sued in the future for, by anybody else for any other non-compliance of no standards that exists?
The answer is no.
No.
At this point, it settles this case, this case alone.
Correct.
The good thing is that all of the other communities have the same problem, the pressure's on the federal government now to try to come up with some type of standards or rely on the courts to come up with them.
Yeah, there was, there was multiple lawsuits filed by the same firm across the state at one time. I mean, it's not targeted just at Swanee County, it's multiple counties. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the settlement with corrections on it that county attorney has said about $15,000.
I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 10, ratification of rural Florida marketing and education grant application. It says then to authorize chairman to execute, I just needed to change that wording to authorize previous signature of economic director Jimmy Norris. So, if we can ratify it with the grant with Mr. Norris's signature on it. Any questions? Hear none, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
I'm sorry, who was that?
John.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hale, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, next item's time specific at 6:05 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving special permit request number SP 190601 by Innovative Solar 168 LLC, authorized agent of Butler and Butler Family Limited Partnership. Mr. Meeks, or, at this time, if anybody's wishing to speak on behalf of this item, if you would stand so the attorney can swear you in.
Yes. If, if you may speak, I mean, whether you do or not, if you think you may speak, go ahead and stand. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God?
(inaudible).
Thank you. Each time that you do approach the podium, though, if you would identify yourself by name and address before you speak. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman, board members, the application that you have before you for consideration is special permit number 19-06-01, special exception by Innovative Solar 168 LLC, authorized agent for Butler and Butler Family Limited Partnership. Subject site is located on a 236 acre site situated in section 34, township 4 South, range 14 East. It's generally located in the intersections of 200th Street, 77th Road, and 192nd Street. Currently, the, the property is under agricultural production at this point, and what the application is proposed to do is install a solar site on the 236 acre parcel. Land development regulations allows utilities and related facilities to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners by special permit. The proposed use of a solar site falls within this allowable use. The attached site plan shows the proposed layout of the solar arrays on the property you have in your attachments. I think it's included with a boundary survey. You'll notate on the actual site plan that the proposed site abuts an existing electrical transmission line that cuts across the southwest corner of the property. So, the, the site would be easily accessible to distribute the power that's collected from the sun. The application and supporting documentation also indicates that there would be two single-story control buildings that would be erected on the property. This would be control, communication, house communication equipment. The proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan of Swanee County and land development regulations. You have attached in your information a proposed resolution for adoption. If the board so chooses to approve the request, then the board would, would do so. If there's any conditions that this board so chooses to add, then those would be added as a condition. At this time, I don't have any other information to add. Representative from Innovative Solar is present, he has a presentation to give to the board, and he'd be able to answer any questions that the board has in regards to the specific site. If you don't have any of me at this time, I would enter the file into the record.
All right, I'll take the filed in the next exhibit, it is composite exhibit 1.
All right, any of the board have any questions for Mr. Meeks? Hear none, at this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, they'd make their way to the podium, name and address for the record.
Do the presentation?
You want him to do the, well, can he do it this time?
Do it first.
They may answer some questions, if you would, you can come on, we could still be in public comment at a time.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, attorney privates, good evening. Thank you for having our application on your agenda tonight. My name is Mike Hill, I am with Innovative Solar Systems, 1095 Hendersonville Road, Asheville, North Carolina, 28806. Here tonight on behalf of our project, Innovative Solar 168 LLC, as previously described by Mr. Meeks, and I do have a presentation, and I wanna try to get that up and running As Mr. Meeks said, our use here is a proposed solar farm. I know that there are others in the general area, and so you're probably very familiar with the general concept of a solar farm. I don't wanna belabor it, but just a few important points. These solar panels are of the type that generate electricity directly from the sun. Our project is not the type of project that uses mirrors to concentrate sunlight, to heat water, or another liquid. That is, that is not us. We use solar panels that generate electricity simply by having the sunlight fall on them. They generate direct current electricity, which is then converted by equipment on-site at the solar farm called inverters that convert the DC electricity into the AC type of electricity that we all have in our homes, that are electrical outlets and that power appliances and so on in our homes. The energy generated, of course, would be clean, renewable energy, and our project is a low-impact type of project that will benefit, that brings benefits without imposing burdens on the county. We don't need to ask the county to extend any utilities to the site, we don't need water, we don't need sewer, we're not going to need you to add staff to the sheriff's department, the school district is not going to have to add classrooms or teachers on account of our project. It's a very, very low-impact kind of project from the county's standpoint, but it will generate significant tax revenue to help with county, the county budget and the school district budget. Just a few words about who we are. As I said, we're, I'm from Asheville, we're based in Asheville, North Carolina. Our company was founded by two brothers, John and Richard Green, who have a combined 50 years of experience in energy projects and construction. We have a number of different departments in our company, in addition to the land development department, which is the department that I'm with. We also have a very skilled engineering department, as well as what we call a power purchase department. That department, my colleagues there, work with utility companies and large commercial users to sell the power that's generated by our solar farms. We do not sell power directly to retail customers. Hopefully, then, I'm happy to go through those. This particular one that you're seeing right now just shows the panels at a solar farm. The construction is not completed at this solar farm, it was undergoing testing at this point, but it just shows the panels laying in an almost horizontal position on their tracking system as the, the tracking system has them at midday. This was taken just shortly before noon time, this particular picture, so. With that, I'll ask if there are any questions that you have that I can answer, and I'll also be happy if any members of the public have any questions, and I'll be happy to come back to the podium to try to address any questions the public may have as well.
Oh, thanks, sir. Board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a...
Yes, sir.
It was a simple, quick fix, quick question, but to, what impact, if there will be any, would it have on the current solar farm here in Swanee County?
On the, on an existing solar farm? It would have no impact at all on any existing solar farm. No, thanks.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
It's more of a comment, but hopefully, maybe we can address this thing. With, in construction, you said your, your trucks would be probably coming in through 192nd and over to 77th. That road is in horrendous condition around the church, Mount Piska Baptist Church. It's...
Yes.
Afraid of, of...
Yes.
Continual, repeated semis coming in and out of there would just create even more problems with that. Would you be willing to adapt that, adapt the change to that, would be just coming in on 77th and then turning back on, on to, I'm sorry, coming in on 200th and turning back on 77th? That way to avoid that. The first part of 77th is in pretty good shape.
Yes, it is.
Right, when you get to the church, it's...
Yes.
It deteriorates.
It, it is. It's in difficult shape there near the church, it's, it's, there are a lot of patches and so on there.
None of the roads are in really good condition, but they're...
We'll be, as a general statement, let me say that we'll be happy to work with the county to come in, to access the site in any way that the county wants us to. If the county would prefer that we come in on 200th, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. The only reason that I mentioned 192nd is because 192nd is paved. If, with regard to the section near the church, and with regard to 192nd in general, if you want us to work with the county highway commissioner to do a pre-construction, have, have a pre-construction evaluation of the road done, and then a post-construction evaluation of the road done, and have us do any repairs to the road if our trucks were to cause any disintegration of the pavement, especially, I can certainly appreciate what you're saying about the area near the church in particular. So, if that area needs to be redone after construction, then we can certainly do that, we'll work with the county highway commissioner and make arrangements.
Make sure I understand, you're gonna be accessing from 129, not from 49, so therefore, you're coming back up 180th, 192nd, is that, is that correct, or am I, am I off on, on these roads here? Because I'm trying to, to figure in, if you're coming up 49, then 200th is paved all the way to 49, 77th, 49, it's all paved. It's just, it's in better condition than 77th is.
When I, when I was out on the site, I came in on 200th from 129.
Yes, that's not paved.
That's not, that, that portion...
49, it is paved.
From 49, it is paved, and I would anticipate that if I had the construction folks were by my side here tonight, I think they would probably say that their preference, if the county is agreeable, would be for access to be from 49, paved road, over to 192nd, paved, and then down 77th, Mount Piska. But again, we would be happy to work with the county on a pre-construction evaluation of the roads, on a post-construction evaluation, and we'll do whatever we can to mitigate any impacts from truck traffic, and that section there by the church, if the trucks have an adverse impact there, then we would work with the highway commissioner to redo that area if necessary.
Commissioner Richardson is the highway commissioner.
Oh.
Down in that area. That's, that's kinda what we're getting at here.
I see, all right. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
I'd be amenable of that, if you wanna pave that street, it'd be great.
I don't, I don't know that we would pave the whole thing. We'd certainly work with you to identify, you know, areas that are impacted by any truck traffic, so.
Thank you, if you're coming from District 4, that would be Lynn Stapleton, Commissioner of the Highway, over there.
I can think of a whole list of roads I'd love for you to drive over if you're gonna build them back.
I'm afraid we probably, we probably wouldn't be able to do that, but certainly, if we, if we tear up the road in front of the church there, which is in, in difficult shape, then we'd work on that and get it back up to, you know, we'd restore that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of questions and comments, but I'd like to let the public speak first, if you don't mind, if that's...
Well, we can, you, we can come back to questions if you have some later. All right, thanks, sir, we'll open it to public comment.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open it to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, if you make your way to the podium, name and address for the record.
Name is Walter Lowe, I live at 8504 200th Street. First of all, that project sounds very nice. My only comment is that I've noticed activity at that site over the last several months. I've also noticed a tremendous increase in traffic on 200th Street. So, I assume the two were, had something to do with one another, I'm not 100% sure that's the case. We also have Haystack Farms, which is right across the street from where we live, but I'm guessing that we have at least two to three semi-trailers Monday through Friday that go up and down 200th Street, along with several other large trucks. That is obviously a tremendous inconvenience to the people that live on 200th Street. When it's dry, you have a tremendous problem with dust and dirt everywhere, and when it's wet, that lime rock is very slick, and that road gets rutted out extremely quickly. I notice it's been graded, it seems like the grader's there almost once a week or whatever. I don't know, since the commissioner is here, is there any study being done on 200th Street as far as traffic goes? Because it's enormous amount of traffic, it's, I've noticed the last six months on that road compared to the, to the previous year, so to speak.
Mr. Lowe, I'll just say that I have asked that, you know, trying to get this road on DOT list to get it paved, but when the DOT's not handing out any more, any more money than we got, it's, it's kinda hard to get a road approved for grant, for grant approval.
Well...
So, we are working, that is one of my biggest priorities down there, is to get that road finished from one side to the other.
That would be great. Two comments then. Number one, it only has two speed limit signs of 35 on it. Number two, to slow traffic down, it might be very wise to put a stop sign at 89th Street, because that, between 129th and 47 or whatever it is, there is no stop signs, and some of these tractor trailers have been in excess of 60 miles an hour up and down that road, and it doesn't happen that often that they're going that fast, but they are tearing that road up, to say the least.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, I think that, number one, we, in, in the construction, Mr. Lowe, of this, of this solar farm, it's not gonna involve any of the unpaid roads, so they're gonna stay on to the, only the paved portions of it.
I'm not 100...
It's gonna affect that, and I know what you're speaking about with the other business and the, and the increased traffic on that road. Unfortunately, this, I don't believe this is the, we're even supposed to be talking about that part of it because it's not gonna affect it, am I, am I correct? I mean, can't, we can't, we can't make anything happen along with this decision to fix that road, conditional or non-conditional. Like, we have to stick to just this, this project, is what I was told, and I asked that question, by the way, it's the only reason why I know that...
Why we have become so attractive and desirable to these solar farms that are relocating or wanting to locate here, so, and I don't know, long-term, he may have mentioned it as well, have we really looked at this in a sense of protecting our county, our citizens, ourselves, long-term? Keep opening this door, I mean, I'm all for solar, too. I'm all for taking your tax money and using it, you know, back in our community.
And we're happy to, we're certainly happy to pay taxes. I know that question came up, and we did run, just for informational purposes, we ran just a very preliminary, rough analysis. Numbers will vary depending on what the actual cost of construction is, and so we would obviously have those numbers, we wouldn't have those numbers until after the construction process is completed, but even with the abatement that is provided by the state, and I think you're all aware that the state has enacted legislation that provides for an 80% abatement, but even with that abatement, we would, just, rough estimate of revenue to the county and the school district total combined, somewhere probably between 150 and 170 or 75,000 dollars first year to the county and school district combined. So, just so you have that, that information. And that's based on recent tax rates and an assumption about the proposed cost of construction being in the neighborhood of about 45 million or so, that would be, that we anticipate our investment would be somewhere in that neighborhood, about 45 million. We would be, the construction process during which the, there would be truck traffic to and from the site would be limited in duration, probably about a year, possibly a little bit less, possibly a couple of months more. We would employ as many local folks to work on the project as we can. We do need to have some specially trained solar electricians, if you will. There may not be a large number of them right here in the county. If not, then we'll have to bring them in from outside, but during initial site prep and some of the other work that goes on, we would certainly try to utilize as many local contractors and as much local labor as we can. In terms, Commissioner Stapleton, in terms of your, your initial question regarding property value and potential impact on property value, there are studies that have been done which show that solar farms basically do not have an adverse impact on local property values. And I would also just mention again that the perimeter of this site that would be visible, or excuse me, the, the, the roads that form the boundary of this site are largely vegetated, and we can certainly, in the, the sections that I'm aware of where there isn't vegetation right along the road, be happy to provide landscaping there to shield the solar farm from view. There's a lot of mature vegetation that's already there, including some tall, many, many tall trees, and I think it would be largely shielded from view, so from that standpoint, the aesthetic impact, potential visual impact would certainly be significantly mitigated by the existing vegetation, which we would leave in, we would leave that in place, we're not looking to take down any perimeter vegetation or anything, so that would stay in place. So... So we would certainly be sensitive to that, and property values have not been adversely impacted by solar farms, based on studies that have been done, so.
I appreciate your comments.
Certainly, you're welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick thing. I know this is not an issue over all the other properties. This should not be an issue over all the properties, except the concern over whether or not the residents, people who own the properties around us, are concerned about their property values, and none of them, I don't believe any of them are here to speak to that at this point. But I will tell you, just briefly...
It hasn't been on the front page of the newspaper yet. They'll be here next time.
And you could be right about that, and I'll give you that one. But just briefly, let me explain to you this area, because it literally is about three miles from my backyard. Across the street, we have a very, very large hunting preserve that's got eight-foot fences on it. Next door, across the street, Seventy-seventh Road, we have the Johnson place, and he's got a big old yard. He just planted something in the front fields, his front fields. I don't know what it was, but it used to be trees. Next door, farms. Up to forty-nine, farms. Across the street, we have a few residents on Seventy-third Road there, and they've called me and they've asked me about, at least some of them have, or one of them, I know one of them has, and we've talked at length about it. But if we really want to talk about an impact to property values and the aesthetics of our properties down there, you need to talk about the quarter-mile away where we have a station that blows off gas off of our gas line that is so loud it sounds like a jet engine is in everyone's backyard. So this is that property. If there is any place, as far as I'm concerned, that would be a benefit, I wouldn't want to put one in a beautiful residential area, but this is flat ground, it's all open, everything is, it's all agricultural. And it's, to me, it's a good fit. Up on the corner is this church and a graveyard, couple of residents across the street. And again, I don't, they know that it's coming in. The people across the street know it's coming in, and there's posted signs that there's something going on. And so, again, I understand your point of view, Mr. Stapleton, and I can, I think I can sympathize with it, absolutely sympathize with it. What happens when it goes in the paper? My big concern is no contract yet. And I know that you guys are working on that contract. It's not like FPNL, it's not like Duke, when they put theirs in, they know they're getting the electricity. So that's my only concern, but as far as land use, I think it's a perfect fit for that area.
And Commissioner, with regard to the contract question, we're kind of in a catch-22 there. In most cases, the utility companies don't want to negotiate contract terms until we have zoning approval. And then, once we have zoning approval, they're willing to sit down at the table and start talking with us. So that's what is going, I mean, that's based on preliminary discussions, so assuming that you all are of a mind to approve the project ultimately, then I'm sure we'll be having serious discussions with Duke, and we'll get to that point. We've successfully negotiated many contracts with them already, previously for our other projects, so.
Any other questions, Pravat?
No, sir, I don't have anything.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make two other brief points. Number one, the project will be designed with local conditions in mind so that the mounting system, the tracking system and everything will be built to withstand weather conditions in the area. We do that everywhere we build a solar farm. The other thing that I want to emphasize is that the solar panels themselves are solid-state. They're like your telephone, your cellphone in that regard. There's no liquid inside any of these solar panels. We don't heat any liquid up, there's no liquid inside to leak out. If something were to happen and a meteorite was to fall on the solar panels and crush a bunch of them, there's nothing in them that creates any kind of an issue or a problem with respect to the ground. There's nothing to leach into groundwater, nothing like that. They have tempered glass on the top to withstand impacts. If they get hit by something, they tend to react like a windshield, they'll crack, but they don't disintegrate, and there's nothing inside to leak out or cause any problems with the ground. So just wanted to make those points in closing. Commissioner Stapleton, I've got some information with me about studies that have been done on property values. I'm happy to provide that.
I mean, with all due respect, that was just one question I had. I mean, there's other questions and concerns I have, it's not just that, and I'm not sitting here saying I don't want the solar farm. I'm saying us as Swanee County are just getting into this, we're brand new, we have one going in, it's in my district, I'm experiencing some growing pains with it. Not that it's something to stop the project, but do we, as a board, need to have an outline of something that we follow when we look at one of these to be approved? I mean, do we need, do we need to have buffers? Do we need to have an actual layout of that we want buffers on this, and this is a requirement, and if you, you know, if you're going to access this way? I mean, there's just a lot of little things that's concerns that, and Commissioner Richardson, my comment about the residents not being here is not that my job when I was elected was to do my best to represent the people, and all I'm doing is coming here and trying to, I represent all the people of Swanee County, not just District Four. And if I got some concerns in my district and I want to bring them up, that's all I'm trying to do. I'm just asking for a little time to try to understand if we're making, if we need to come up with a line item of something that we want to see as we move forward with this, before we just go to approve it, to just say, because we don't have anything. We're just, we're coming, we're coming in and we're saying, "Go do it," and, I mean, I can check you out there and show you some growing pains on the one that's happening out there. That's all I'm saying.
I apologize if my comments were taken any way, shape or form, condescending any way. And I would say, Mr. Chairman, I concur with his assessment. We do need a standard in this county because we are getting more and more requests for solar.
I don't disagree, but I think under this current application, if you set that standard, I don't think you're able to enact it, and I'll let Mr. Pravat speak to this.
Address that just a little different. This is a little different situation. This one is a special exception, and this one comes directly to y'all. This is, this is an opportunity for y'all to set some buffer requirements, set some restrictions on how they're going to get in there for this particular project. It's not like the one we had before where it was just, you know, a regular land use. Because this is a special permit, you get to have the opportunity to do that. So this would be the time to do some of them, if you would, if you so desire.
I mean, I want to restate that, it's not that I don't want a solar farm to come here. I'm not, I'm not trying to say I don't want you to be here. That's not the, I'm just trying to figure out if we need to set a guidelines to where we are, that we sit down with you and we say, "Hey, this is what we expect." You know, we expect if these roads, if this happens, just what you agreed to a minute ago, that you'd be willing to do that. But we need some parameters of something to go by, you know, is kind of what I'm getting at. It's, please don't take it that I just want to run you out of town, that's not it.
No, thanks. I'm not getting that impression.
But with this, with this application here, we can enact those now or when we approve it. If we do so, you can say special condition that you're going to make them do a buffer, that you're going to make them have a certain access point. We've done that, I don't know that we've done it with solar farms.
Like with the Darrell, I mean...
But we've done it with the rock mines, where we make them pave the roads going in. You just add a special condition to the permit, but I think...
But we're saying if we vote on it right now, it's saying it's fine for it to be there on that property.
It's, well, we're saying that we're, tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pravat, but we're looking at the evidence provided on whether or not this is a use where it meets all the qualifications for a use that's already allowable on that property. Would that be correct?
Well, it's, it's allowable as a special permit.
As a permit, correct.
That's why they're here. And it's something with the electrical use and utility use that would be allowable if you grant them a special permit. They couldn't just go do it.
Right, right. That's why they're here.
But they also, the proceeding here tonight is an opportunity to, if you're going to have special conditions for the special permit, for them to be allowed to do this, this is the time to put those on there. Such as you could add a condition to granting the permit, that they have a pre-construction meeting to identify the situations that deal with the roads, and that they would have the post-construction meeting to identify whatever upgrades need to be made as a result of damage that occurred during the construction. That would be a condition. Or that you would have a condition, too, that they have a buffer going around the property since their panels reach a maximum height of fifteen feet. You could have them have to have some type of buffering around there that would cover the fifteen feet, whether it be, and then put a condition that if they were going to, they have buffering, but that they cannot remove those trees. I mean, those are the types of things.
That's my problem, though, without being able to sit and have discussions on it and talk about these things. It's kind of just hard to pull them out of there and list ten items that I want to be on that and say, "Okay, let's go with it." You see what I'm saying? I mean, that's the...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, because that was one of the, the last thing I wrote down, was should we have a workshop order to discuss and have time to research and create some stipulations and regulations just for solar farms? What would be, I mean, I know this was a time since the matter tonight, I mean, can we put it off and have, I hate to...
Whatever, whatever you, they are here.
Yes.
You can't put it off to then enact different things, have a workshop and enact different things for them to have to comply with in addition.
Just have to do it right now.
They're here. No, it is not to say that you have to complete the meeting. You can table this matter and come back at another time, which the next meeting, we have enough time to be the, this first meeting in August.
You'd have to re-advertise.
Yeah. What's, when's the first meeting in August?
First meeting in August?
Sixth.
No, but I'm just saying, how much time do we have to get there?
It's the sixth.
When is...
Days.
I don't know, I don't have my calendar with me.
August sixth.
August sixth, okay. I mean, you can table it, you know, to go to that, thank you. You can table it to go to that, you know, to go to that time.
I think you would be continuing the hearing, is what you would be doing.
Correct.
You don't have anything to table right now.
I mean, moving, you continue the public hearing until that time.
On what date?
Well, the next available time would be the sixth of August. It would be the first meeting next month.
Would that be an evening meeting?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do have one more question, and I apologize, one more that I failed to remember. Are there any generators that are going to be running on a regular basis? Any noise that's going to be created? Our other solar farms, our stationary solar farms, so their stationary solar panels, I know these things turn on very, very slow motors and...
They do.
They're really geared down, but...
They are.
But my question is, is there, are there any other, is there any other machinery going to be on, on the property that's going to create sound?
Typically with solar farms, the sound-producing component of a solar farm is the inverter units. There will be six or seven of them located within the solar field of our proposed solar farm. They emit a low hum that you can hear if you're standing next to them or if you're within fifty feet, maybe a hundred feet. They're not going to be audible outside the perimeter of the solar farm, so unless you're inside the fence within the solar farm, you're not going to hear them. You mentioned generators. There will be, there will be probably a backup electrical generator associated with the control buildings, but that would just be for backup function in case of a power outage. It would not be running under normal circumstances. Realize that probably sounds rather ironic to talk about a power outage at a solar farm, but, so, no, the, there really isn't. Have a fifteen-foot setback on the sides and rear, so around the rest of the perimeter of the solar farm, we're showing a fifteen-foot setback. And again, we would leave all of the perimeter trees and other vegetation around the perimeter in place. We would just be working on the site interiorly so that all the existing vegetation, trees, and so on would remain.
I got a question for you. On your sites that you've done, or that you're working on or you've done previously, when you access, like if you come off the paved road and you access the property and you go to the individual stations that you got throughout the property, I forget what you called them there.
The inverters.
What type of roadway do you have to those? Is it lime rock? Is it paved? Is it...
Typically, we just...
Dirt?
Basically, we just leave it as dirt, unless the county engineer, for whatever reason, tells us, or county fire rescue tell us that they want a different surface inside. Typically, those are just left native surface.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions, but it's related to the lease, but I'm not asking you for details on...
Sure.
This particular lease, but, you know, typically, how long are your leases for? Thirty years, twenty years?
The leases are twenty-year leases, and they have, typically have four, five-year renewal options, so that they could go for a total of forty years. The panel life, the solar panels typically have a life of about thirty, between thirty and thirty-five years or so. And they may get upgraded if more efficient panel technology develops, if panels become more productive, and if the economics work, we may upgrade the panels. But thirty, around thirty to thirty-five years. So our leases will go for as long as forty years. But at the end of that time, if the property owners, as I've mentioned before, if for any reason they don't want to continue, then all the equipment can come off and the property can go back to agriculture or whatever other use the property owners want to make of it, so.
And on the leases, y'all, it's a per-acre lease for a dollar amount, or is it just a...
It's a dollar amount per acre per year.
Per year? And y'all pay on them once a year?
No, we pay on a, pay, the rent is paid, at least the way that the leases are typically set up, the rent's paid on a monthly basis to the property owner.
On a monthly basis?
Right.
And that's all I'm getting, my point is, is that it's local, local people that's farming, making a, looking for another way to make a living off of their property.
Yeah.
And this is just another avenue for them.
We oftentimes hear from farmers, because in most cases, we wind up not using the full amount of acreage, and the Butler family has other acreage, but many families will do a, want to do a solar farm on part of the property to generate revenue from that portion of the property to support agricultural activities on the remainder of their property. So they find it very helpful from that standpoint.
And that was my point, that it's a monthly or yearly revenue to a local farm on top of whatever tax revenue it brings in.
I'm all in favor of trying to help the residents. I don't want to hinder their way to make a living whatsoever.
Right.
I just, to the, to the public and to the landowners that's there, maybe in the future, I mean, I myself, I don't want to look at a six-foot chain-link fence with probably another eighteen inches of barbed wire on top of it. That's just me. But everybody, you know, everybody's different, but I'm just saying, if I live across the street from that, that's why I'm talking about buffers and setbacks and different things that will address that. I understand that, but this is why I'm trying to talk about some parameters of what we do.
Sure.
Because every one of them needs to be fenced. I understand that.
Yeah, that's a requirement of the Electrical Code that governs these, but with the existing trees and other vegetation that's in place, and if, as I said, if there are any bare spots where you want us to fill in, we'll be happy to fill those in. The fence and the wire on top and so forth is basically not going to be visible behind the existing vegetation.
Well, and that's for this, that's for your...
Right.
For your project. What I'm saying...
But I understand you... But I understand you got larger...
The one I'm on, it's a mile of paved road and it's a fence, like a prison. So it's a, it's like we've already crossed this bridge and now I can't do anything to try to help.
Yeah, well, no, once you go across it, you can't go back, so you have to get it while you're here.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm just expressing my concerns, what I'm, the growing pains I'm going through out there. I just want the board to be aware of that.
And each application is, is taking on its own merit. So what you do for this one, you don't have to necessarily make the next one do. If we make him do a buffer and the next one has a natural buffer or is in a place where you don't deem it necessary...
You know, the next one could be off, off the paved road where it's a half a mile of cross-private property to get to the center of it and it's surrounded and you don't see anything.
Right.
So I understand what you're saying with that, absolutely.
No, I fully agree that we need to have further discussion on, on moving forward, but me personally, on this particular project, knowing where it's at and having, being out there, I'm, this location with the buffer and them following the, whatever way we want them to go in and any other conditions that y'all want to put on it, I'm fine with it. I also want to respect y'all's, we need though to do further research on it and, you know, I'm not going to argue on that. If y'all want more time, then so be it. We can push it off to the next board meeting, but I'm, I'm good with it tonight if y'all so choose to, to want to move forward with it tonight.
The biggest thing on the buffer, Mr. Chairman, that I, that I just think about is, is on 200th Street, there's, there is no buffer along 200th Street at this, at this current time. There's, there's not enough trees. They've taken pretty much all of them out of, up to the, up to that power line, the transmission lines. And so that would be one that I would be concerned about, making sure that there's an extra buffer put in there. As far as the rest of it's concerned, there may be trees that are there, that are, that are higher in their foliage. That's, that's one of the things that I'd have to go back and look at in our project.
Well, that's, that's, that's all I'm asking. I'm just asking...
I don't have a problem with it either.
If we, you know, I mean, spend a little more time vis, I'm fine with what Mr. Campbell said about, you know, each site's specific to itself, but I just feel like we need to, you don't, you don't make a deal after you've already, I mean, you don't come back and ask them, hey, I'd like to put this here and do this and expect them to do it, because at that point in time, they're just going, you're going to do in good faith what you, you know, it's not necessarily, everybody's going to always do the right thing. And I'm not saying that's, that's your case, I'm just saying.
And I should add, we have no objection to any reasonable conditions. We're happy to talk with you about if there's additional buffering that's needed, vegetative screening, buffering and so forth. If you have, you know, if there's something about the access route or the access gates or anything like that, you know, we're, the earlier discussion about repaving that area near the church, if the truck traffic damages it, we're, again, that certainly we're fine with the condition with regard to that. That's all fine with us.
Obviously, my biggest concern is the damage to our existing infrastructure out there from the, from the additional traffic out there. And I know you're going to be bringing in truckloads of equipment and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, but on that, I'm fine with the pre-meeting and the post-meeting, as long as it's a independent person taking a look at it. No offense, but I don't want y'all's guy on y'all's payroll to be the one looking at it.
No, sure. We fully would expect it. Commissioner Richardson and, and if you have anybody else at the, at the county that you work with, I mean, we're happy to work with any of the folks from the county or consulting engineer, if you have a consulting engineer.
All right. One more thing, on, on, on your, on your, on your barrier, on your border, what is, for this area, what are y'all proposing? Are we, are we talking potted plants, six foot high or six inches high that we got to wait?
This is what Mr. Bravat was talking about. The board establishes the minimum height that needs to be maintained on the site.
But that's what I'm, I'm asking what they're proposing when he says a border.
Well, we are open to whatever you tell us is, within reason, I should say, but whatever is appropriate to the area in terms of the type of vegetative screening. And again, mo, a great deal of the perimeter is, is already screened with trees and fairly thick lush vegetation, so we would keep all that. So it would be filling in along, I think Commissioner Richardson mentioned 200th Street, if there's open areas down there along 200th, perhaps in the area where the substation would be and where the existing high-voltage electric lines are. I think there is an open stretch along there, so you may want some vegetative screening along there. Whatever types of plantings, and we would not start off with something, you know, very short. We realize, but we probably can't put in a full 15 height, 15-foot-high, you know, mature tree, but we could probably find something that would be three, four-inch diameter. I don't know how tall that would make it, but, you know, we would work with local nurseries to find, to comply with whatever plantings you direct for appropriate screening that would eventually mature. I mean, it, it might not be the first year that it's full height. It might take a couple of years before it's, you get a full screen, but we'll certainly work with you on whatever your requirements are as far as that's concerned.
As long as it's not cedars.
No cedars? Okay.
No, I'm just...
Any other questions for this gentleman?
And that will continue a public comment. Mr. John, you got something for us?
Thank you.
Be sworn in.
Were you sworn in earlier? I guess not. Mr. Bravat, were you sworn in?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before the board this evening would be the truth, so I hope you got it?
I affirm and attest that what I say is the truth. John Koch, 1-805-289-Ninth Road. Gentlemen, Commissioner Stapleton, Mr. Chairman, you are bringing up a problem that I tried to tell the commission nearly 40 years ago about land uses and farms and the different things. And we chose to go down to a quarter, two-acre and five-acre lots anywhere in this county, and it has presented the problem you are now facing. You now have an opportunity to correct some of those mistakes of nearly 40 years ago with other projects. In this case, you have the ability to tell this company what they need to do to put it in. And as a neighbor and as a person who believes and lives with solar power, I understand, I know what's going in there, and I would like to have it as a neighbor because then nobody else is going to go in there. The other thing is, is that the land use of where this is going, remember, it is a solar farm, and that's basically what surrounds it. Residential use is held to a minimum by some people who are rather affluent and can afford airplanes. The subdivisions and the crisis that was created 40 years ago does not begin until you move closer to 72nd, 77th, 77th is, and as you are moving west towards 129. Then you start moving into subdivided lands, five acres or less residential use. Now, there are still some large agricultural operations that are mixed in with that area which is buffering the high agricultural use for this particular project. You have the ability for this project to set, you will fix the roads, you will put a buffer, and I would like to add, gee, what are we going to put there? I refer you to Institute of Food and Agricultural Science and the Master Gardeners Program, which can tell you which plants, which native plants will grow the best, grow the quickest, and would fit in with our environment and not be invasive. I understand about cedars. You need to spread them far apart and wide so that they can become cedars, and then you need to put something in between like a Florida holly or something like that. So what you do is you have a high canopy, a mid-canopy, and a low canopy. You can also require them to put their fence not on the public right-of-way facing, but on inside of the property with the barbed wire going over, so that anybody who really wants to get in is going to have to go through that buffer as well as the fence. So you're giving them more security if you were to do that. As far as power inside the thing, I'm surprised that they have not looked into some kind of an inverter battery system so that some of the solar power is siphoned off to meet those temporary needs that this farm would have and can be done. And the noise is minimal. You can't hear it. This would be the third solar farm in this, in this county. And I, I too, don't understand why they want to come here, but it all will go into Duke Energy, which feeds all of the grid. Duke doesn't just serve this group or this group, it all goes into a common grid. How they divide it up beyond that, I'm not quite sure, but it's all one grid. So you could technically receive power from New York because of our aged antiquated system. The only other thing is, is that I want to say is, is please vote for this particular project and put the conditions that you need to make yourself satisfied and to satisfy your questions. And then, Mr. Stapleton, yes, Mr. Hale, you know, yes, yes, Ronnie, Mr. Richardson, have a workshop again to see if we can clean up some of the mistakes that were made in the late 70s to 1992 to allow, we have, if every one of the, the lots were filled in Swanee County today, we'd have a population approaching of 100,000 easily. And more cars and more things than you'd ever want to know of. And the 5th District is the highly populated area for residential development than any one of the four counties, four districts combined.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hear none at this time, we'll close. Public comment. All right. That's a board discussion, what's...
Mr. Chairman, I just, I hate this because I feel like that, that landowners ought to have reasonable expectation that they can do with their land something that's reasonable to the county. This seems very reasonable in that it's a, it's acceptable use. It's, it's just, we're just determining whether or not we're going to let them lease their land to a company who's going to provide solar. By the way, let me...
We're not doing that.
Oh, hang on, hang on, let me finish.
I don't mean to interrupt you. Let him finish his thought, then I'll give you the floor.
I hear enough people who, I, I'm very protective of our agriculture as well, but I hear enough people who've moved into the county who gripe about the dust, gripe about the water quality getting, getting worse, gripe about this, gripe about that with the major, larger agricultural producers. This is not going to produce any problems. This is a stable system that's going to be there for a long time. It's going to produce income on a regular basis. It's going to produce income for the, the property owners. It's going to produce taxable income for the county. And yes, we need to have some sort of standards or at least expectations where we want to go, but we definitely need to remember that we give our farmers a right to do with their land what's reasonable. And this is, to me, very, very reasonable, especially given the area. That's all.
Mr. Stapleton?
I, I just wanted to say, we're not, I wasn't ever proposing that we're was going to tell them they couldn't do that with their land. We're, I just want parameters of what we expect when they do it, is in case I misspoke.
No, I wasn't referring to what you said. I think I was referring to the general conversation as to where we're going with it.
All right. Any other discussion amongst the board?
I do believe that we need to, we need to push this off to table this for one more meeting.
All right.
To satisfy all of the needs.
You're going to continue the public hearing?
That's what I mean.
So is that, do we need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
A move that we continue the public hearing to August 6th?
I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson to continue the public hearing.
Second.
For the solar farm, August 6th. I had a second by, was that?
Mr. Stapleton?
Commissioner Stapleton, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just have a question. It may help the applicant. If you ask them to go ahead and prepare a plan that responds to the concerns that they've heard expressed here and get that submitted so that you've got an opportunity to evaluate that before you get into your next meeting?
Yeah, I would like to give them, I mean, there may be more direction y'all want to give them at the next meeting, but if y'all know exactly, or some ideas now, I'd like for you to give them to them now so they can come prepared.
I would prepare for a buffer, make sure that we have plenty of buffer all the way around, but I'd like to hear some recommendations from those who are, who are in the extension office who can help out with that. It's free advice, or it's advice we pay for already.
My point, though, was that if the applicant turns something in to you, you've got a copy of it before you meet.
Yeah, we want to see something. I mean, absolutely. They can, they can pretty much take what you've heard here tonight and bring back your plan exactly to meet the, the concerns of the board that you've heard. So, and, but submit it to us before then so they can have it in their backup packet. That's pretty much what you're saying, correct?
Yeah.
I got a motion on the...
Otherwise, we just start the whole conversation.
Correct.
Zero.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. At this time, we'll close. No, we will not. We will postpone it.
Yeah.
About it. All right. Is it hot in here, is that just me?
It's warm.
I'm turning it up.
Doing all it'll do.
All right, moving on to item 12, Constitutional Officer's item, set date, time, and location for tentative and final budget hearings. Most Honorable Barry Baker, Clerk of Court.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's time to set the, it's a tentative and final budget hearings. It's a school board final budget hearing date is Thursday, September 5th at 5:30, and if the board is not able to take and have their meeting, it's the same date as the school board. The tentative budget hearing must be held between September 3rd and September 18th after 5:00 PM in the afternoon. The board must advertise the final public hearing within 15 days of the tentative budget hearing by September 18th if the tentative budget hearing is held on September 3rd. The ads, is the ads must be submitted to the Swanee Democrat two days in advance of the advertisement running. The final hearing must be held two to five days after the ad appears in the Swanee Democrat. And so if you look after the budget hearings in 2018, the newspaper has now gone to where it just has one issue per week. So it's where that we have to be very cautious of our, of our timing. All that being said, it's based upon the timeline, the following dates are best, assuming that the school board hearing is on September 5th, which, which they have confirmed with us. The tentative budget hearing, if we could have it Tuesday, September 3rd at 5:30, it would allow us to take and submit the ad for the final hearing by, by Monday, September 9th. The final hearing and ad, the final hearing ad is published on Wednesday, the September 11th. The final budget hearing, it could be Monday, September 16th at 5:30. Where we were trying to move it to where it would be on, on that Tuesday, but it would fall out, out of the timeline. So if we could have it, it's the final, September 16th at 5:30, and the tentative would be September 3rd at 5:30.
I'm good with those. Everyone else?
Good.
I just need a motion to approve it. Got a motion? Got a motion by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, who am I going to pick? Mr. Fleming. Got a second by Commissioner Fleming?
Good.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Hey, all that being said, it's where that Keith and Nina and some of the other finance staff that have worked very hard in getting your books ready, so that's where that they are here in the back. It's where that they can go over those with you. If you need us to schedule you some time, I want to do that. Our staff would be glad to take and accommodate.
All right. All I'll say is that it doesn't feel like we should be already at the point of the year where we're picking up our budget books.
I understand. It's a thing, I would like to thank again all the different departments, Mr. Harrison's departments, and Greg, Jamie, and Catherine, and all the others. It's where that they did a great job in working alongside of us, as well as the other constitutional officers. And so, all that being said, we have everything here. If you have any questions, you can get with me.
I don't have any for you. Do y'all have any questions for Mr. Baker?
No, I don't.
No, I'm good. Thank you, sir.
If you will, please don't leave tonight before I, so I can give you your book.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 13, presentation by, well, I'm going to let Jimmy Norris introduce everybody. We got our economic director, Jimmy Norris.
Good afternoon, or evening or night, or, anyway, it's good to be here. You know, Victor was going to do a presentation, but I told him we'd be at the Brown Lantern for some wings by 7:30, so I don't know if he's still interested or not.
He's six minutes late.
But I do, I do want to take a minute to introduce Victor Liotta. He's been working on the Strategic Sites Inventory Program for us. He did the initial program. And when I first came into this position, it was kind of already underway. And of course, Shannon here had a big part of that, and he's worked between the three of us. We're in communication every single week. And Victor's going to kind of show you what he's been working on. And please, if you have questions, I mean, he's not bashful. He'll answer anything that you have. But we're trying to identify properties that we can go out and market to the world to bring people here. And believe it or not, we just don't need solar farms. Obviously, we need manufacturing, and we need logistics centers and a lot of other things. So I've got a whole list of stuff here, but I know we're running long. So I'm going to bring Victor up, and he's going to do a presentation for you.
Sure. Welcome.
Jimmy? I've got a 52-minute presentation. Just kidding. It was, I'm going to keep this short and sweet. I'm going to allow y'all to ask some questions as I go through this. If you have any, please don't wait till the end. I can answer questions as you go through this. And also, I know that Mr. Jimmy Norris, being not only familiar with this project, but very much familiar with land development and understanding what it constitutes to make a good site for an economic development use, can help answer those questions, too. My name is Victor Liotta. My firm is Liotta Location and Design. As a way of background, my consulting experience is in site selection for commercial and industrial project, manufacturing projects. I've done that for many years, my home state of Louisiana. And the one thing that we learned more than anything else is that it doesn't matter how great a workforce you have, the business climate, tax incentives, infrastructure, if you don't have the right piece of dirt, none of it matters. And many of the times, we have communities that have sites that are being listed on the market because it's a landowner's volition to sell his or her property. And it may be a sizable piece of acreage, but at the same time, that property may have problems with environmental concerns, wetlands, poor soil conditions, flood risk. And so they get marketed often for sites, or as sites for economic development projects because it's really the only property the community has to work with. So our years of site selection experience, we learned all the nuances about what it takes to make a manufacturing project work and from a location perspective. And we took that and we created what's called the Strategic Sites Inventory Program, our SSI. And really, the whole intent of that is, instead of waiting on a prospect to come knocking in a community with a potential project, we want to look in the backyard of that community and find all those real estate assets that we consider to be competitive, are quality real estate asset for an economic development project. Put those properties through an engineering and environmental screening process and landowner engagement. Not every property owner certainly is interested in putting their property on the market. But if we can do this in advance and help communities create an inventory of a known quality of good real estate assets, it's going to largely increase their competitiveness for good job-producing projects. At the end of the day, this is about not just creating jobs, but quality jobs. So that's the, that's the intent of the Strategic Sites Inventory Program. And I'll go through, I'm going to, I'm going to move through this, these slides quickly. And ultimately, I'm not intending tonight to get in the weeds on the findings of sites that we evaluated, so much as to give you an overview. And ultimately, that information is available if you wanted to dig deeper into what we found. The long and short of it is, is that Swanee County has some very good assets, some good real estate assets, in conjunction with the infrastructure, transportation, infrastructure, and otherwise, as well as workforce. And ultimately, we think that these sites could be well positioned to attract some quality projects to the, to the county. Purpose and benefits, the strategic sites program, program phases, our SSI Phase 2 definition, what we found here in Swanee County, and some next steps is the overview here. Again, I'll move through this quickly. Increasing community competitiveness for economic, quality economic development projects by strengthening the quality of the real estate assets is the intent, as I mentioned, of the program. If you look at this map, it's hard to see on the monitors here. These represent points across the region. This is the North Florida Economic Development Partnership, which constitutes 14 member counties in North Florida. Mr. Jeff Henry is here. Jeff is executive director that runs NFEDP, and they work very, very hard to help promote North Florida and its member counties to bring in quality projects, to create jobs. And ultimately, through our initial phase of the program, we identified many sites that we think on face value have good characteristics for an economic development use through what we call SSI Phase 1. That's the discovery process where we look for property. What we're here to talk about tonight is Phase 2. That's a desktop engineering and environmental assessment of, really a deep dive into the quality of these sites as it relates to engineering and environmental concerns. There are four properties in Swanee County that we looked at, which is what we're talking about here tonight. And you can see, well, I say, it is difficult. You've got, you know, 15 sites in the region that have gone through Phase 2. And it was Swanee County ultimately applied for a grant with the Department of Economic Opportunity to have funding in place, to have four sites go through that process. These are the sites that we found across Swanee County through the initial effort. Just to put that into context, these are larger sites that would serve for a larger manufacturing project. I think we went down initially to around 100 acres, and in some cases, around 50 acres or so. So not every site that's suitable would be included because there are smaller acreages. Geographically, we've got four sites that were identified as, as a perceived higher value for an economic development project in Swanee County. And those sites happen to already have been known to be available on the market. And working with, locally with the local officials and the landowners to determine that these, of the mix of sites that we had in Swanee County, these seem to be the most suitable to push forward through the process of engineering and environmental due diligence. Again, it's hard to see, but we've got the intersection of US 90 and I-10, you've got two sites on your side, and on US Highway 129, post I-10, there are a couple of sites there as well. Two sites were indicated as a potential for an intermodal logistics center. Essentially, that is an FDOT program that identifies real estate assets that could be used to have both multi-modes of transportation from, say, truck traffic, truck transportation and rail. And there's some, some definitions that if you meet those criteria under the FDOT program, then potentially it would help elevate those sites maybe a little closer to the head of the line for funding projects. Now, that doesn't guarantee anything. However, the program is in place through FDOT, and these two sites were evaluated and met, at least in our opinion, the general qualifications for an ILC through the FDOT program. As I mentioned, our program phases. Phase 1 is site discovery. That's the identification of potential sites that would serve to create jobs through an economic development attraction and investment. Phase 2 is what we're talking about today, preliminary due diligence. It's not boots on the ground yet, but it's a deep dive into all the GIS data, all the information that we use to determine whether a site can, we can back up the competitive claims of that site. The third phase, which is sometimes already known, in this case, landowner engagement, to ensure that those properties are indeed available and at a reasonable or fair market value price. That's a whole nother component of being competitive is pricing. We don't get involved in that. That happens locally. Phase 4, if it warrants Phase 4, is boots on the ground. That's where a Phase 1 environmental site assessment, Phase 1 cultural, geotechnical study, things that would help to further the detail of information to back up those competitive claims and produce those in reports with engineering and environmental consultants. We don't perform that work, and if sites advance to that point, we typically look to local firms to help provide those levels of study. Phase 5, branding and marketing chronologically isn't necessarily last, but you've got to create the tools and the resources and materials necessary. Once you've identified high-value real estate assets for economic development, it doesn't do any good if the world doesn't know about it. We want to make sure that you can promote that and go, not just wait for the doorbell to ring, the phone to ring, or somebody to come looking for a project in Swanee County, to give the tools for someone like Jimmy Norris to be able to go out and proactively promote Swanee County with this information to help back up, again, the fact that you've got good competitive sites here in Swanee County. When we talk about Phase 2, this is where we look at an engineering and environmental desktop review to expose any fatal flaws, anything that would rise to the level of killing a project, something that would create a burden beyond mitigation with respect to maybe wetlands, for example, or a flood-prone issue or a sensitive cultural issue. A big part of what we look at in our screening process is not just how well a company can operate on that site. It's a balance between being protective of environmental conditions and concerns, the cultural aspect of what it means for a site to be located in a community, how well is that a fit? How does it affect the current surrounding land use? Is there compatibility there? There's many factors that go into why we suggest that a particular piece of dirt is a good location for a manufacturing project. Those things are all taken in aggregate into consideration. And so we just want to dig deeper and make sure that we don't have something that comes up that would, that would ultimately render a site less than competitive or altogether rule it out. The last piece is a rough order of magnitude cost. We just make a general determination of what it would take to prepare that site for development through grading, site prep, bringing in road improvements and/or utility, extension or infrastructure access into the site, just to give a sense of what kind of cost it would look at. Because, yes, you do have some good pieces of dirt, but if it's going to cost $80 million to bring in all the infrastructure into a piece of property, it's highly likely it's not going to ever land a project. So we want to get a sense of what that looks like. Some of the things that we look at on the engineering front, flood risk, of course, slope, terrain, soil conditions. We look at the access to your key transportation infrastructure, are there impedances? A good example of that is having road and rail access into a site that's compatible to get, either you have an existing crossing. Rail companies aren't going to, you know, very easily put in new rail crossings even though you have access along a certain part of a site. These are all things that go into determination of suitability. On the environmental front, it's not just about wetlands, but potential threatened endangered species. We certainly don't want to have impacts there. There are stewardship components to that. There's also just practical time and money from permitting that we want to avoid as And then, at the end of the day, we're just trying to make an informed decision. Do these sites warrant moving forward or advancing? Do you, we don't want to spend time with a landowner or invest money in a piece of dirt that ultimately is going to have a fail point somewhere. So by going through this Phase 2 study, we can quantify that. We can have a reasonable certainty that we're looking at a good piece of real estate or not. And maybe in some cases, we decide to shelve that site based on the findings. The idea also is that we should have a better chance of these sites surviving formal due diligence because of this upfront work that's been done that suggests how well a site is going to survive when you go to scrutiny of boots on the ground. Lastly, that this information, even though it doesn't necessarily include the more formal due diligence, it is more than ample information to respond to a request for information when a company or a prospect comes looking and begins to inquire about properties or locations for projects in Swanee County. This information's very detailed, and it goes a long way to answering those questions. But again, backing up the competitive claims of these properties. As far as funding, I mentioned North Florida Economic Development Partnership. NFEDP has led the charge in North Florida, really in the state, starting with a Duke Energy grant and back in, going back to 2014. They have gone out successfully and secured EDA grants through the federal government that have had matched money. Swanee County has been included in those studies because their membership in NFEDP. Enterprise Florida has continued their support with, with both time and money, advanced the program mainly for site discovery. Swanee County, again, included in that. And then, most recently, DEO. DEO, as I mentioned, funded through a technical assistance grant the four sites that we pushed through the Phase 2 study. These numbers won't necessarily mean anything to you. We have two sites that are rail-serve, two sites that are not, of the four that were selected through the process. We have in the report, this constitutes, I'll describe it, it's basically a report card of a 30-page report with another series of 25, you know, 10 to 20 maps, and then appendices that constitute some 300 pages of documents. We distill all that down to a simple grade point average. So we go through a series of, we quantify things in buckets. The condition of the site, what are the physical parameters, the physical criteria? What's the slope, the elevation, the land cover, surrounding land use? We look at connectivity for things like transportation access points, how well are those roads to maintain truck traffic, both for construction and operation? Are there competing traffic that may not be too compatible in that location, like schools, for example? Maybe not next door, but, but not mixing school bus traffic with heavy industrial traffic. Connectivity to workforce. Then we look at the community itself. We want to make sure that there's a fit, there's not incompatible land uses, there's not cultural sensitivities or other things. We don't have all the answers. There's a lot that each community is unique. Swanee County has its own unique cultural attributes and concerns. But the end of the day, all of these things get smashed up together to go to composite and that just translates into a 4.0 grade scale. And that's how we ultimately rank the site. The first site, 280-acre site. Now, important to note is that we don't claim that this is a 280 site for a project. We have to look at what are the buildable acres inside of that, that are contiguous acres where we avoid most of the wetlands, most of the flood risk, most of the other conditions that we need, but also that is proximate to those, those assets for transportation and utilities. In this particular case, the site was a client, ultimately with Mr. Roberts, Mr. Norris, and then their staff, collectively within the parish, the county, looking at how well does this site serve an economic development interest in Swanee County? Well, this was the first site that they, they ultimately ranked in that regard, and it has a competitive score, in our opinion, of a 3.5 out of a possible 4.0. The second site, and by the way, these were the four, this particular site is very well merited for an economic development use. This is a 382-acre site, 174 buildable acres. Through our study and our process, we gave it a 3.6 in terms of its GPA. Third site is a smaller site. This is one of the potential intermodal logistics center sites, the ILC site at, at the Interstate 10. And ultimately, this site has scored a 3.4. Right across the interstate is the fourth site. It's a 98-acre site with 70, around about 77 acres of buildable area, scoring a 3.4. These rail-serve sites, and most of these sites are intended for a light industrial use. We're not looking at heavy industrial manufacturing for these types of projects. Manufacturing, assembly, commercial freight logistics are the types of projects that we, we envision would be highest and best use on these properties. You look at the tail of the tape, all four sites received favorable engineering and environmental reviews from our study from the SSI Phase 2. They both, they all have excellent transportation access, good, large, contiguous, buildable areas to support a development with relatively, relative to commercial and industrial activity, low cost for site prep. We've limited this to no, limited or no wetlands impacts on these sites, as well as limited to no flood risk on these sites. Where there's some room for improvement, utilities access, in some cases where we need extension of services, broadband availability, but that's everywhere. That's not just here. That's, that's pretty much common in a lot of, across rural Florida and a lot of states as well. I know you know about that. And then slope, in this part of North Florida, you have some terrain issues, but it's not insurmountable. Just as, I'll cut through these because you can't see them at this, on this monitor, some of the site maps that we produced. Last slide, what are the next steps? Where do we go from here? Continuing to make sure that the landowner engagement is solidified. Typically, we look to see the county hold a purchase, real estate purchase option agreement that, and Florida is different from my home state, Louisiana, so the rules and regulations that apply there will have to be explored. But ultimately, control of that property is... Last slide, what are the next steps? Where do we go from here? Continuing to make sure that the landowner engagement is solidified, typically, we look to see the county hold a purchase, real estate purchase option agreement that, and Florida is different from my home state, Louisiana, so the rules and regulations that apply there will have to be explored. But ultimately, control of that property is very important to a company coming in. They need to know that you have an agreed-upon set price and that property is available. It just helps to minimize their uncertainty in the process. It's very, very important. Site branding and marketing, I mentioned, in terms of getting site materials done, site flyers, conceptual site plans, what it could potentially look like for this type of manufacturing operation, is very important to develop those materials. We do site visits, we conduct drone flights to get video, where you can have a virtual tour of these properties that goes to not only additional survey of these properties, but also for marketing purposes. Nothing beats being able to visualize and see these sites in almost, in real time. And then, down the road, some of these sites may warrant, some not, formal due diligence, as I mentioned, the boots-on-the-ground part. The last piece, and this is something that you've already been to some degree discussing earlier, we talk about land use. Some of these sites are properly zoned, I say properly, they're zoned for the intended use as we see it for an economic development use, some are not, which would warrant a comprehensive land use amendment. It's not a trivial process, and it takes time. The main thing to know is that companies have a lot of choices when they're looking at locations, and you're not the only game in town, and the prospect of a six-month process to rezone a piece of property that may or may not go the way that you intend, you just don't have serious projects that can afford to wait that long. So, we, bless you, we, I learned in Florida, it's unique to have a state-governed process that requires counties through their comprehensive land use planning to go through the land use amendment application process, and in working with DEO, who understands what we're doing, obviously, they're supporting it with funding, they have an expedited process for land use amendments that could take upwards of six months. And then, you have to have your own internal meetings, at least two, I think, or maybe how that works, but you can't have a prospect, again, either sitting in with the debate on whether or not a site needs to be rezoned, or just waiting for that timetable to happen. So, we advocate that you make the commitment to help get these sites rezoned at the appropriate time, so that you can push them forward, knowing that you don't have that as an obstacle. So, with that, I know it's quick, I understand that, but in the essence of time, wanted to give you an overview of what we're doing with the Strategic Sites Inventory Program. This is going to have, I use the term, it's not if, but when, someone locates on these properties, it's going to produce quality jobs. Florida has a tremendous amount of resources, and I think in the market, the economy, all the things we're seeing, but again, if you don't have dirt, a good quality piece of dirt to put somebody, then really, nothing else matters in your efforts to attract projects. Be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do you all have any questions, Orin?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how long this process has been in, but I was looking at your phase one dots on your map, and it was interesting. Did you have one down in Lafayette County on the Swanee River for phase one? That was, there was a blue dot down there, I could have sworn I saw it. I'd be interested in how that one got on there, but nowhere in the southern half of the, of the
That's right.
...county, there was any other places that could be?
We're putting solar farms down there.
Yeah. No, 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 go back to the next slide before that. Look right down there on the, it's the Swanee River.
So, this, all these blue dot, all these blue dots through phase one?
Yeah, you're right.
Right. When you, when you look at this, so, we consult through phase two, we look at, in particular, we have the, through the, through federal IPAC data, as well as the FNI Florida Biodiversity Matrix, and we look at also all the protected lands, the environmentally protected lands, federally protected lands, and a lot of these get ruled out for that purpose. And Swanee County in particular, and the Swanee River, that entire reach of that river is protected. And so, ultimately, in the beginning, this is done based on your, just proximity to infrastructure and soil types and things like that on a high level, but what happens is, if we go through phase two, these will drop out significantly. So, the funnel's wide at the top. We had some, last count, it was over 1,300 potential pieces of property in 59 of 67 counties in Florida that were potential sites through phase one. But knowing that we have to have tight constraints on ecological and environmental concerns, those are going to continue to narrow. Then, you put the landowners into the equation, it continues to narrow. So, we feel like having 1,300 some odd potential sites is a good starting point to whittle that down to sites that are going to be practically pursuable, which will not be in the hundreds, but probably in the tens.
Well, related to that question would be the I-75 interchange. I'm just wondering why that, none of those showed up in there either in the phase two. I would have thought that that would have been moved, but it could have been because your process began before we started really working on the infrastructure out there, but I'm just curious about that one as well. Or, maybe it's the wrong type of, we're looking at a totally different type of business development.
We were, again, Jeff Hendry with the whole party, we're having a little security funding, basically, to take our whole region through phase one, which is identify those parcels. Phase two takes additional funding, and I want to compliment Swanee County for, you know, stepping up to the plate and go, I mean, we've got more phase two sites in this county than we do have any other, because that's really incumbent on them working with us to apply for additional dollars. It takes additional dollars to do the phase two. And so, you know, looking at Swanee, he's got, I think, four sites, I think Columbia County, we did two or three already, but again, this is kind of iterative process where we've got to go additional, pursue additional dollars to do those phase two studies, not to mention phase three and four, but again, I don't want to, I do want to compliment Jimmy, I mean, I think, and Shannon as well, when pursuing those dollars through DEO, because there is money available to do those phase two studies, and at the end of the day, that's the only way we can cull a great site discovery, phase one, into those projects that really have a real opportunity to bring a project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I think the other answer to your question, too, is it was the amount of the grant dollars. We had to look at our most likely sites to develop, and, I mean, there was more sites that we had originally selected that we were going to submit to, but the grant dollars ran out a lot sooner than the sites ran out.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's certainly no indication that these are the, these are the only four sites of value. We have several, it's just to that point. It was about prioritization of what you had to work.
And with so many areas around the interchanges that we've been working on, those are all obvious choices, and we just, we would love to have done on as many sites as possible, and we did with the funding we had.
And a big factor was knowing that these sites, the landowners were, had these sites available to sell or lease, that's
Well, that was everything. Once you identified a site, you had to make sure it was available, because I can tell you, Shannon and I went round and round and round for a couple of months, trying to narrow it down, and then Jimmy come on board, and it was same thing, you know, we'd find a site that would meet everything, and then one thing would kick it out, and we'd go to a different site.
I'll just say, if you did quick and dirty math for me, we had four, each county in our region had four sites, that's 56. Imagine us marketing in and for 56 sites per region.
Well, you said
Each county, frankly.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we consider these sites to be nationally competitive. What does that mean? They're good pieces of property in counties, but they might be good for a local company to expand if they run out of room. Would they attract a major project that's looking at South Carolina, Georgia, Alabama? You know, I don't know. These sites would. I consider these sites to be nationally competitive sites.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I had one question. How do, how do our scores compare to our neighbors?
I would say that based on NFEDP's membership area, they're pretty much, you're on a pretty even playing field right now. Prior to having this study done, the answer was, I don't know, because we hadn't put, now, granted, you, the sites we identified through phase one on face value have merit, but now that we've quantified it through phase two, then I can answer the question in saying that they're looking pretty good. I'd probably put these sites in the upper 85% of sites that we've looked at in terms of quality.
I can tell you, our priority is going to be those sites that are along Interstate 75, I mean, those have deals, they've got a lot of
Yep. Thank you.
With your, with your job, if you were handling these sites, what would be your next move with them to get them out in front of the world for us? I mean, what do we look to do from here?
Right. The first thing I would do is, on the landowner, the landowner engagement side of things, is to firm up a real estate purchase option agreement. And again, I have, I can't provide any guidance, because I don't know how that works in Florida.
I understand.
But lock it up, and I would do it for a minimum of one year. It's always going to be a first right of refusal type thing, but nonetheless, the main thing is you're locking the price in.
Right.
Now, the landowners, and obviously, this is about being competitive, we have other options in Swanee County, these aren't the only sites. So, you've got, there has to be an understanding that these need to be, I know this is, I'm going to throw out a general term, fair market value, but there's data to suggest, based on other types of projects going in, what the average cost per acre needs to look like. If you get out too far outside of that, you're defeating everything we're doing if you're just not cost-effective on land. Now, that's the landowner's prerogative.
Right.
The next thing I would do is, I would immediately start the process for the land use amendment for sites that are not currently zoned for either an industrial or employment center. I would look at making sure that you have the alignment with the zoning, the future land use, and go through that process, because it takes time. And you can, you can do everything else while that's on that track, you can begin to do the other things. I would recommend, again, a site visit, capturing some information with respect to the site visit, documentation, photos. We want to build a package of marketing material for these sites, as well as some conceptual site designs. Even though we don't have an applicant, or a tenant, or a project, so to speak, we know what generally these, where the access points are, we can get some general footprints of what, a couple of different options. When you can visualize that, that goes so long in a prospect's mind to be able to see what their potential facility would look like. If you wanted to take it a step further, you have, many communities have spent dollars on getting videos produced that are, the entirety of Swanee County as a community, but then focusing in on that site, and it's, basically, it's a, we don't do this, but it's a production video that showcases this particular piece of property. But I would say that the landowner engagement component, the zoning component, and the marketing materials is where I would go next, and then just begin the process of blasting the site consultant community with this information, because I wouldn't be embarrassed to waste their time. I'd be proud to give them something that goes in their top shirt pocket. They may not need, have a project in mind right now for some of these sites, but knowing the quality, and not just that, everybody makes claims about quality, but that's opinion. We have facts to back up the fact that these sites are quality sites, and it's time and money with site consultants, like everything else. They know that they have something that's ready to go, that they can back up their competitive claims, they'll stick it in front of a prospect's nose quick, as long as you're in the market vicinity of where they need to be.
Any other questions, Orin?
The only other one I have is, the work that you've done to date, is there a, is there a timestamp on it? Is it good for two years, three years? Is something that'll just kind of stick with the property?
Yeah, that, that's a great question, and it goes back to zoning. Not, you don't only want to get the site itself properly zoned, but, you know, please take into consideration protecting that property by zoning around it, so that you don't have an incompatible use back up to that site. Even though you don't lose the site to another development, you could have something backup that just perception or otherwise could render it, you know, really a concern or a liability. So, I would say that you have to judge that based on the pace of how things happen in Swanee County, which are going to be different than Leon County, and certainly other places in Florida, but I would say that at a minimum, I'd call this a good, you know, year to two-year, just in a general rule of thumb, in rural Florida, a year to two-year type timeframe before something significantly changes. Some cases, things change that open up property. You talk about riding a road that all of a sudden, now, geographically, you've got sites that didn't have good transportation access, now we want to look at those again. But the zoning is probably the biggest thing that would lend to the shelf life of this.
So, barring no zoning changes or different uses coming in that make it not usable, there's really not a time span
There isn't.
I mean, we kind of are in control of whether it is still good or not good.
Right. Population expansion, growth, if, you know, if you back up residential to it, you know, school, transportation routes, anything like that would change it, but if it stays static, then I don't, I don't think there is a shelf life.
All right, well, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Like you said, we have the data to back it up now, and obviously, you've worked with Mr. Norris and Mr. Gamble and some others, but if we had, if Mr. Norris had a company that was looking to come in here, are you there for us still to have a conversation with someone and to show the research that you've gathered, is that?
We do, that's, I mean, and that's my job, that's what I do. We don't just throw stuff over the fence. I mean, it may be cliche, but we always talk about trying to be there from identifying a piece of property to a ribbon-cutting. And so, absolutely, I've been doing this, I'm from Louisiana, born and raised, started this process in our home state. Florida was the first state that I expanded out to, really because Louisiana doesn't compete with Florida for a lot of projects. It's just different economies and different worlds, and I did that on purpose. And Duke Energy is the one that really started this program with funding here. That was back in, when we first started, was in late 2012, early 2013, and here it is 2019, and I've been in 59 of 67 counties, and so, absolutely, we want to be here to support y'all in any way we can.
Okay. Need to add anything, Mr. Norris? Anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Well, we appreciate your time, appreciate the hard work.
Appreciate having me, thank you. Appreciate it.
I do want to follow up real quick, because we do have Mr. Jeff Hendry with us, and he kind of surprised me today. He showed up, and I didn't know he was coming, but that's because he's buying dinner.
He's here, we'll let him talk.
Yeah, so, but I do want to bring him up real quick, because he did want to update the commissioners real quick on a couple of things that he has going with NFEDP, and I do really want to thank Victor again, because he's worked long and hard on that, and he's talked to Shannon and I a million times about these pieces of properties and what we have and what we don't have, and what we need to do, so I really do appreciate all his hard work.
One quick, is there a phase after this, or was this kind of the phase, the final?
What, the short answer is yes, but right now, Mr. Norris has what he needs in these reports to market these sites, because we know they're on the market. So, he can use what he has right now, but I'd recommend, again, going through with the phase three, the landowner engagement, and then beginning what we consider to be phase five, again, not chronological, in the, the marketing materials. I would not recommend boots on the ground yet, because this site may not, these sites may not last that long. If you attract a prospect, they're going to do their own homework anyway, no matter how much you do, they have their own engineering firms and all to do that. So, that's something you could reserve for later, that could add value if the sites don't move, but I would, I would maybe put that off to the, you know, to the future.
Thank you.
And I want to thank, again, I can't do this, the reason we, this desktop, there's only so much I can do sitting behind a computer. And so, obviously, we have to consult with, with Mr. Roberts, Mr. Norris, because they're the ones, this is in their backyard, they're familiar with this property. But let me just say this, we've done 40 sites across, well, 35 sites across the state of Florida, and then several other states, but to have this level, we have questionnaires that we send out, they're detailed, they're several pages long over each site. Mr. Jimmy sent it back to me, and every blank had something in it, and if he didn't know, he found out. I don't get that in a lot of other places, so I just want to say thank you for doing that, because it makes our job easier, instead of having to go pull teeth from a chicken, which is what it's usually like, so, anyway, thank you.
You've been the most brief you've had, at least tonight. Two things, one is, I want to let y'all know, and this is important, especially elected officials, if you can, certainly staff, I know Jimmy's already registered, we do an Economic Development 101 course, it's a, you know, it's a one-day thing, and I think it's tremendously valuable. Actually, we have a site consultant that leads that Economic Development Academy, we call it. We're doing one on September 12th, it's going to be in Chiflin, and we've got one on September 27th that's going to be in Lake City. So, just encourage y'all, we market it through Jimmy, and I know he gets it to the commissioners, and any of your people that sit on advisory boards or anything, we also have scholarships to underwrite the cost of that for y'all, if you want to attend. The last thing I'll say, I've had this partnership with Victor since, I think, 2012, when I saw his initial presentation with Duke Energy. As y'all can see, it's a cumulative aggregate thing. I'll tell you, in probably about six months, on our website, we'll have every single site, phase one and phase two that's gone through, and have, people that are visiting that website will be able to access the data, and by that, I mean CEOs, companies, site selection consultants, but for people like Jimmy that might be responding to a request for proposal from a project consultant, he'll have all the data embedded in that, he'll be able to print out the maps, he'll be able to include a packet with that, so we're really trying to automate that for a lot of our EDOs, particularly in our rural counties, because they just don't have the internal capacity in many cases, whether it's resources, the GIS, or whatever, and that's what the regional organization does, is we can leverage a lot of our counties together. I'd close by just telling you that, again, you know, where we've been since 2012, at least with this project, is pretty monumental in my mind, and I can tell you, North Florida, of all the three regions that serve rural counties, might sound arrogant, but I can tell you, we're leaps and bounds ahead of the others, and we're making ourselves more competitive, and I think Swanee County's a big microcosm of that, because they've got the most phase two sites already. So, thank y'all, it's always a pleasure to talk to you, and the reason I'm over here with him is I had jury summons today. And the reason I'm over here with him is I had jury summons today that got canceled. He picked me up for coming over from Baton Rouge, and now we're going to your Brown Lantern and spend some money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Brown Lantern's going to be closed in a few minutes.
Yeah, I'm excited, they're not going to make it. Next is staff reports. Mr. Scott, you got anything that's pressing for tonight?
Well, the quick version. Just want to let you know, we've wrapped up the Heritage Park grant for the new ball fields and pavilion and playground and such. The new trail is completed and being used, and wrapped up the Douglas Center grant, and a dozen other things. But football registrations be underway.
Thank you.
Twenty-second, start at the twenty-second.
You did, you said, you said the trail was finished, even the last part we were talking about? Good, good, good.
Wonderful.
Any questions for Mr. Scott? Appreciate that lengthy report.
Also, $350,000 additional funding from the state for the fairgrounds.
For the fairgrounds, yes.
Nice.
Nice, thank you.
That's what, two years in a row you've slid that in?
Well...
Three?
Something like that.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to general business, discuss with item fifteen, discuss possible board action preliminary rate for fire protection assessment for 2019-20.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There's no proposed change in the rate. The request is to go ahead and approve the preliminary rate of $100 on the fire.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, was that you, Mr. Richardson? Got a second by Commissioner Richardson, any discussion?
The other applicable rates would also still apply. I'm just pointing out the one that's most important to most people, and that's the household.
Yes, sir. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, item sixteen, discuss possible board action preliminary rate for solid waste assessment for 1920.
Mr. Chairman, there's no proposal to change that, it'll continue to be $130 per household. That's the requested action for his approval of that rate.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
That you, Mr. Hill?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stapleton, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item seventeen, discuss possible board action, fire services in the town of Brantford. A couple of board meetings ago, y'all gave myself, Mr. Summers, and Mr. Harris the authority to go to Brantford and discuss what we could do as far as providing the fire service. After looking at the numbers that it would cost us to provide it, and the revenue that would, it would come in if the town of Brantford instituted a fire rate equal to the county, there was too big of a shortfall to provide any services with a facility located in the town. We presented them with an option of providing it at our current locations of Beachville and McAlpin, and we pretty much left it, well, there. They, I'm pretty sure that they had, from the options that we talked about, have decided to stay with their volunteer service. They expressed some needs that they have in the meeting and made some requests, but I directed them in the meeting to contact Mr. Richardson to make those requests.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that lead-in. I was contacted by Councilman Herndon, Randy Herndon, who advised me that their building is being decertified very, very soon. Their fire department building, and they will be in need of finding a new place. And I don't know all the details about why it's decertified, but...
Will you put your mic down just a little bit?
We have, yeah, gee whiz, that's better, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I find if I was having a hard time hearing, anybody else was.
They believe that they can build a building adequately, adequate to house two very large engines, which are receiving the biggest, the greatest amount of attention right now, because they've got, they can't get them in a, in a building. And, and their hoses are exposed to the, to the sun and the elements, and those, they don't take long before they deteriorate. And so they told me, asked me if they could help with some monies available to build a building. And we did a little bit of research and feel like that we can get a, an adequate steel building out there for, to meet their needs for $100,000, or maybe even a little less than that. And we just happen to have $100,000 available that was set aside for Brantford already for land acquisition, parks and recreation, for a piece of property that is now no longer available, because it belongs to the state. So I am requesting that we consider, however you want to do it, and with whatever conditions you want to place on it, just changing that $100,000 over to them to meet this immediate need, and then we can just discuss the conditions by which, for doing it. I don't know if I've explained it well enough or not. I tried. You have any questions, ask?
So, does anyone have any questions for him?
No.
On the, that's the money that we set aside several years ago for, or a couple of years ago for the... It was last year. We set aside for a piece of property on the Greenway, on the river. Okay. I know they have a more immediate need now than, than what the Greenway is. I know the Greenway is a, a good project, but, but it's a five to fifteen-year project.
Yes, it is.
And this is an immediate need for them. And the money has already been set aside. I don't have a problem if we reallocate it for that need, but I would like to see us, you know, not just hand it over to them to, but a not-to-exceed number of the $100,000, and let them go out and get the bids and come back, and us meet that need up to.
Mr. Chairman, I'd add a couple of things to it. Number one, the $100,000, up to $100,000, but also it is evident that Brantford's struggling with their, with their fire and, our fire protection in their city. And they have volunteers, and I think our Public Safety Director back there could speak to some of the difficulties with getting new volunteers. Eventually, I think we're going to, if you want my opinion, eventually, we're going to be taking care of the fire protection in Brantford. But I, having said that, I believe that if we build this building, or we provide some monies for them to build this building, that we have a reversion clause in there, that it comes back to us with the property for the use of fire protection.
No, I, I don't disagree with that at all. I believe if, if we help fund it for the volunteer fire department, and anytime they quit using it for fire, and we, as a county, start providing it, that it would revert back to the county.
Yeah, because if we ever had to put the fire department in Brantford, and I'm sure at one point, with growth, we would probably have to look at it, this, this building is safe several...
Yes, sir. So the volunteer firemen, there is the city of Brantford?
Town of Brantford.
The town of Brantford.
Yes, sir.
Their equipment, their people.
Their equipment, their people.
Yeah. And this is the, this is the main issue that sparked up the whole debate on whether for the county to provide the fire service there, or to, for them to continue to provide it. Some of the issues that they ran into with the county fire, providing it, was if we did not locate within the town of Brantford, our stations put them without of the five-mile range, and I, I can't remember, but it was...
From our, from our station right to on Brantford Highway, where you take the T, five miles is directly in the middle of the intersection. You don't cover anything north, you don't cover anything south, so, and it's as road miles, it's not as a crow flies anymore.
Yeah, they, they changed it now to road miles. And so that's what sparked the initial conversation to get us to that, that point. But we looked at providing ALS unit within the town of Brantford with, what, was it six, six full-time?
Six full-time employees, two per shift.
Yeah, and it was going to run us five hundred plus thousand. And the fire assessment brought in sixty-three, so it was sixty-seven, and, you know, we just told them that there was no way that we could make that difference up to provide a station down there, especially within the north ends lacking for a station. And they understood.
Sure.
Real quick, Chairman, my recommendation is if we, if we're going into a building and putting funds into a building with that intention in the future, that we have some input of design, because with the requirements that there will be, that are in place for manning and staffing and things like that, there are some things that that building, we can put some pre-thought into it in the design. We don't have to put that, that type of stuff in that building right now, but designed that it's easily obtained future. So it's going to cost us a lot less if those are our intentions later.
If it comes back to, yeah.
Because it's going to require a firewall, it's going to require lots of other things, that if we design it properly, looking towards the future, and we have to move into it, it's going to cost us a lot less, because we're going to be ones with the burden of, of making the upgrades.
So one of the things that we talked about as far as, as far as facilities is, are concerned, some of their, their facilities that they have already, and where they're looking at putting this proposed building, would allow them to utilize those facilities of the old town hall with, without having to put a whole lot into this building. So there are, I know there's certain requirements you're talking about that would be obviously important. I think their biggest concern is, is making sure they have a place they can get these trucks out of the weather, so...
Basically, their, their requirements that they're trying to meet currently is they have to have, out of the elements. They basically have a cover, they need to have heat. In Florida, it's not that big of a concern, but it's still a requirement. So that's what they're trying to meet.
Covered, heated, and insulated.
Yes.
Was the three things. But no, I mean, you, you were there the other night. I think having Chief Summers in on the design discussions is not, is not a bad thing. Especially moving forward if the case it does.
I just want to make sure that we're, we can save money in the future that we possibly can, because we'll have to take care of the cost of it.
I, I think that's good. I don't know what decision you need to make, but, I mean, as far as action we need to take, but, but if that's a condition upon that action, I'd make sure I put it in there.
Yeah, if the board is willing to consider it, I think just the action you need is to reallocate the funding and give...
Two, two things, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One is to do just that, and I would ask the board just go ahead and vote to do that, because that's a financial issue that we can take care of. But if you follow up with another motion, just authorize Mr. Vavat, the chairman, Jamie and myself will work with them on putting an agreement together to bring back to this board.
Well, that would be two separate motions, and I'm, I'm fine with it. I mean, with the monies, what's sitting there was already allocated for pretty much the town and the park development. I don't have a problem moving over it to meet an immediate need.
I move that, first of all, reallocate the monies over to them for that purpose. I'm sorry, reallocate the money for that purpose.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Richardson, got a second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we give Mr. Vavat, yourself, and Mr. Harris the authority, go ahead and work together with them to get an agreement, so you can bring back to us for consideration, as well as they can give to them. They, and I will say this, time is kind of of the essence on this thing, simply because they're going into a workshop on the 29th this month. So if something will be put together that they can talk about a little bit during the workshop, then we can get back with...
We can be there to at least workshop with them on the 29th. I think it shouldn't be a problem. I know it won't be for me. Okay.
I think we can get a quick agreement put together.
Yeah.
The design input will be a separate matter, but we can make that happen as well.
Wait a minute, there's two golf tournaments between now and then.
I'll put the agreement, I'll put the agreement together, Mr. Richardson.
And that agreement would include...
It'll be one page if I do it.
And obviously would include the, Mr. Summers being involved.
Correct. I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm having a hard time hearing, damn it. Was that you?
That was me.
Can't hear that deep voice.
I'm trying to get closer to the mic.
No, it's not that. My sinuses are clogged up, and I just can't hear good.
There is some requirements to being chairman, you got to be able to hear.
Well, y'all, y'all elected the wrong one for that. Selective hearing.
That's the truth.
That's the problem we got.
That's the truth right there.
I got a motion of Commissioner Richard, second by Commissioner Hill, any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, item eighteen, discuss possible board action, any issues associated with the water, the wastewater plant. You got anything, Mr. Harris?
No.
All right, item nineteen, additional agenda items.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Vavat has one, and I have misplaced it. What do I do with it? I'm drawing on it.
Mr. Chairman, we have a couple of properties that we'd like for the board to consider declaring surplus that we no longer have a use for, and then authorize me to dispose of those following the direction of Florida statute.
I'm drawing on it.
Mr. Chairman, we have a couple of properties that we'd like for the board to consider declaring surplus that we no longer have a use for, and then authorize me to dispose of those following the direction of Florida statute.
Any questions from the board, or to Mr. Harris, or Mr. Vavat?
Just one motion, or one on each, one, two?
One motion would be fine.
One motion?
I make a motion.
If it was earlier, we could do it in two motions. It was pretty neat, huh?
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hill, I have a second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on to item twenty, public concerns, comments, anyone wishing to speak, that make their way to the podium. Name, address for the record.
Nobody.
Seeing none, we want administrator comments, Mr. Harris, you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Wow. Board members, you, Mr. Hill?
The only thing I have, I did want to give an update, because I didn't at the last meeting, on the River Task Force. We met with the city of Aldosta. Mr. Norris was with me, I appreciate him going, and if I forget anything, step up and speak up. They are working diligently to fix the problem. They're being held up on permitting through the state of Georgia right now, building their last tank, I hope would be the last one. It's like eight million gallons, is that what it said? Eight to 10 million? Eight to 10 million gallons? But they've done a massive amount of storm drain repair, and that's going to continue on for another 10 years. But they recognized and tried to identify the problem areas and attack those first. But that's really it. I mean, we're just, I will say this, they're going to meet with us, the city of Aldosta is going to meet with the River Task Force in September, somewhere here in Florida. That place hasn't been picked yet, but I'm trying to get them here at Swanee County. So if that happens, I'll definitely let everyone know, moving forward with that. But anything else? Although I did find out Jimmy knows the mayor real good up there, probably could have helped us with this a long time ago, but thanks for speaking up. That's true. They didn't have this before in the other spills. They now have a station, if you will, where they can have, they have their own trucks, what, three trucks of their own, plus other local, I'll say, septic companies, that if it starts to overflow, they can pump them into those trucks and move them somewhere else, move that waste somewhere else. And the thing they said, they have now the capability of releasing what they didn't before, upwards of 15 million gallons daily now, to also try to catch that overflow and to eliminate that problem that they couldn't do before. So, yeah, they're working on it. I think, what'd he say, the total budget's going to be $100 million when it's said and done? Yep.
I'm looking at these people, and they said your time's up.
I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Stapleton? Just a couple of quick things. In all seriousness, I want everybody to keep Commissioner Hill's family in their prayers. His father-in-law's fighting a strong fight here, and we thinking about you and praying for y'all. And just keep them in your thoughts. Also, two things for Commissioner Richardson. I'd just like to say, I appreciate you stepping up tonight and giving us a little time to look on this solar farm issue. And also, I'd like to commend you on getting creative with... shortfall of funds down there and figuring out how to help fire rescue. Good deal. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
I'd like to thank every one of you for being so patient with us, asking a lot of questions. And I also like to thank the board for allowing me to be creative with that fund, with those funds, because I know it is immediate need.
They know that this is still a short meeting compared to what a lot of them used to sit through.
Yeah, I understand that.
Everyone wants to.
Anyway.
Mr. Fleming?
I don't have anything much, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Ms. Gabrielle. On July the 4th, they had the fireworks and the presentations downtown. And her and Chief Williams, they gave the board, the county commissioners, recognition. And they did bring me up on the stage. I want to say thank you. One thing I see, the lighting that you all had down there has been taken up. I think the lights look good, but they're gone now. Okay, thank you.
The only thing I have was just, I'm sure everybody knows, but if you don't, North Florida College ribbon cutting was the other day, and they opened. And I thought, looking forward to their success, I think they're going to be a great asset in Swanee County. And I just hats off to the board, the chamber, and the city and North Florida, for everybody to work to bring that together. Everything we do affects people's lives, but education has the real ability to change your life and to bring it so close to home for some that aren't fortunate enough to be able to drive 30 miles one way every day. It could make a huge difference in their lives. So thank everybody for working hard on that. I don't have anything else. All we need is a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Any second? All in favor, say aye.